I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would rise and join me with the invocation given by Pastor Seibert.
Let's pray. Gracious Father in heaven, you are the sovereign ruler of all, and we come to you on behalf of the city of Kingman to humbly seek your guidance, wisdom, counsel, and power. We know that it is you who appoints the governing authorities over all people for the purpose of establishing and enforcing the rule of law, that the sinfulness of men might be restrained until the day of Christ Jesus. We also know that the rulings and decisions that are made here today are to be for the people's good and that they are only as good as they adhere to how to govern, what ideals to uphold, and how to uphold them. Ours is the great task of being ministers of your goodness to people and to represent your rule here upon the earth. We therefore beg you to endow us with the knowledge and wisdom that we will need in accomplishing the great task of ruling and representing your people. We also ask that you would help us not to hold our offices lightly, knowing that we will all one day give an account for what we have done in the body before you. Father, we know that you reward faithfulness of your stewards, and so we ask that you would grant us to be the faithful stewards that you have appointed this morning. We therefore pray your blessing upon our council this morning, that you would give us the spirit of wisdom, understanding, counsel, strength, and the fear of the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Supervisor Johnson, if you would lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to call for an executive session to be held February 2nd, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS Section 38-431.03, subsections A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney Ekstrom, is there any discussion of pending or contemplated litigations or claims at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We now move on to rectifying and oversight from last meeting, the swearing-in of constables. Do we have a member of the judiciary to conduct that for us? If they want to step on down, we can proceed. And let me again say on behalf of Mojave County, constables, you do good and valuable service, and we do apologize for the oversight, and we thank you for your patience. The guy wearing the black gown is in charge of this, so he'll set you up. And for those of you who don't know, it's the Honorable John Paul Moss who will be conducting the ceremony.
All right, so please repeat after me. I, John Paul Moss. Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona?
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The office of survey constable.
Full-time city constable. Thank you. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will start on my right-hand side. Supervisor Angus, any reports?
None this morning, Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have none, thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
All right.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the chairman of the Legislative Policy Committee for the Arizona Association of Counties. I'm holding the meetings at 8:00 a.m. every Monday morning instead of the usual Fridays. If any of the elected officials have anything that they want addressed that's in session, please get ahold of me. Obviously, our first one was this week, this morning, and not much is going forward. I do have a report from Robert Widener on what's going on in DC. The first one has to do with PILT. Just prior to Christmas, the adjournment to 113th Congress, the House and Senate passed a $446 million PILT appropriation, which is paid for in two parts. $77 million automatic spending for PILT as part of the Defense Authorization Bill and the balance of $363 appropriated dollars as part of the Combined Omnibus Appropriations Act. The PILT experts at the Department of Interior are now trying to figure out how to disperse these funds to counties from two separate congressional acts. Since the PILT monies in the defense bill are treated, as they have been over the past seven years, as automatic spending, and the remaining funds are treated as appropriations, as they have from 1978 to 2007, it is possible that counties will receive PILT in two payments. One from each bill, or the executive branch office of management and budget may allow the funds to be combined, so that the payments to counties are made only once in June, as has been the standard practice over the last decade. Number two is secure rural schools. Congress failed to pass secure rural school payments to national forest counties. It's hopefully only a temporary setback. The reason SRS is not funded stemmed from the ongoing Senate failure to address the issues of active national forest management. While the House passed such a bill twice, Congress was unwilling to send more money to counties unless there was a plan in place which allows timber harvest to resume in the national forests as part of the active management effort to better manage the national forests while at the same time allowing economic benefits of timber harvest to accrue to local communities across the public land states. Long-term solution to county payments legislation, incoming House Natural Resource Committee Chairman Barbara Bishop and his Senate counterpart, Alaska's Lisa Murkowski, are committed to putting together legislation to provide certainty for counties, for our county payments. That's about all, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else has any questions on federal legislation, please let me know.
Is there any questions from the board? Supervisor Johnson? No? Thank you. I have no committee or legislative reports at this time, so I will now move on to item four of the agenda, the county administrator's report.
Chairman Moss, I have no report today, thank you.
Excellent. Item five, approval of the December 1st, 2015 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the December 1st Board Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to call the public, and I would like to first state that when we instituted or we instituted call the public back in January 2013, these are exactly what we wanted to see, input from the public. So thank you very much for attending, because we have quite a bit of input today. The first speaker is Kathy Hodel.
I'm Kathy Hodel, and I live at 2460 Demerit Drive in Lake Havasu City. We are asking you to increase the funding of the Kingman Animal Shelter. We were initially told that this meeting was going to be held on Monday, but because obviously that was a holiday, it's on Tuesday, and many people were going to come yesterday, but they had to go to work today, so we would have had a lot more supporters. Constructing a new animal shelter would be a fraction of the cost of other projects and would benefit so many homeless animals. It's obvious to most of the Mojave County residents that the animal shelter needs immediate attention. As you know, the Kingman Shelter is owned by Mojave County, whereas the Lake Havasu Shelter is privately owned by Western Arizona Humane Society. For decades, the Kingman Shelter has had a reputation of being pathetic. It's too old and too small. The Kingman Shelter is one-third the size of Havasu Shelter, yet takes in three times the number of animals. Unacceptable. Eight years ago, 5,000 signatures were collected to improve animal welfare and sheltering in Mojave County. At that time, the Board of Supervisors were asked to build a new animal shelter in Kingman. The supervisors then paid $72,000 for a report to determine the need for a new shelter in Havasu, I'm sorry, in Kingman and Mojave Valley. What does that mean? I'm sorry. I'm okay? Okay.
As long as the light's green, you're good.
All right. I'll hurry. The 32-page report stated that both Kingman and Mojave Valley shelters were in a state of disrepair to a point where they were not functioning as acceptable animal control facilities and according to the standards of the Humane Society of the United States. So we're not even up to par at all. The reports-
You still have time.
Pardon me?
Keep going, you still have time.
Okay, I'm almost in. The report said that it would be wiser and more efficient to build a new shelter at a new location than to try to remodel and expand the other ones because they have so many problems. The report stated that the Kingman Shelter has room to hold about 60 animals, which they stated is much lower than what is needed. They said that the shelter is forced to euthanize healthy, adoptable animals to make room for incoming animals. Last year, just last year, the Kingman Shelter took in 5,000 animals. You only have spaces for 60. The study recommended that the Kingman and the Mojave Valley Shelter be combined, and the Kingman Shelter would be the headquarters for the county, and they could say, "Lake Havasu, whatever."
Ms. Hodel, you can continue, because I believe you have many people speaking on this issue, and I suspect that you are probably an excellent spokesman for them all. So to make sure that everything gets out, I'm going to grant you the courtesy of continuing to the end, and then we'll decide if speakers following you, if they want to follow up with anything additional.
I appreciate that. I'm almost at the end anyway. The point was, is that study that was made wanted the Kingman Shelter to be the headquarters, which was ideal. They could dispatch all over, whatever. And as I said, if they wanted to leave out Lake Havasu or Bullhead, that area, they could, that could be negotiated. And then the end was, the power to help our shelter animals is in your hands, and they need all the help they need. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodel. Our next speaker is Jim Child. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Child? Okay. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Susan Ballard. Ms. Ballard? And if you could, please state your full name and your address for us.
Of course. My name is Susan Ballard, and my address is 470 South Tacoma in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I'm going to read a really short letter from former State Senator Linda Bender. Good morning, my name is Linda Bender. I'm a former elected official at both the local and state level, but I was writing to you today as a past president of Western Arizona Humane Society. We organized the first working contract between our organization and the county back in the 1980s. The buildings, which are owned by the county, were very primitive then, and to this day in 2015, the county has spent almost nothing on maintenance or improvements of this facility through which over 400 animals are processed every month. For those of you on the board who love animals, you would be appalled at the conditions that these unwanted animals have to live in. It has been my understanding that the shelter has been a priority by this board to be upgraded and improved. I implore you, all along with thousands of other animal lovers who live in the county, to have a heart and allocate funding to improve the lives of these animals while they are in your custody. I encourage each of you supervisors to go visit that shelter and look at the condition of the buildings and ask yourself, why would you want to continue to make, you would want to make this a top priority? It would cost so little compared to other projects and benefit real lives. Sincerely, Linda Bender. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Ms. Evy Sistaro, I hope I pronounced that name correctly.
Actually, you said the first name wrong.
I apologize.
Good morning. My name is Evy Sistaro, and I have lived in Lake Havasu for 43 years, and my address is 1930 Goldust Drive. We need a new animal shelter. Last year, the Kingman Shelter took in about 5,000 animals. That's a large amount for animals in such a small shelter. The county is making some small improvements, such as replacing old fencing, which is a Band-Aid for the problem. What is really needed is to expand the capacity by adding more kennels, so the animals are not so crowded and have a better chance of being adopted. A new shelter needs to be built. Right now, that shelter is so unappealing that the public does not want to go there. A recent report stated that the first impression the public sees upon arrival is critical to the success of the shelter. The impression they should receive should be warmth, welcoming. That is definitely not the case at the Kingman Shelter. Our residents have said for decades that the Kingman Shelter is in bad shape, and they are concerned about the animals' welfare because the shelter is too small for the large amount of animals that are taken in. I know you care about our shelter animals. I know it's time for our shelter animals to finally come first. They deserve our compassion. They need our help. Please consider funding a new animal shelter. We are the voices for the animals. I own an adopted animal from the Kingman Shelter, and every time I pat him, I know I saved his life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sistaro. Our next speaker is Carrie Glancy. And Ms. Glancy, if you could, state your name and your address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Carrie Glancy, and I currently reside at 2001 Western Avenue in Kingman. I have a slideshow I was supposed to play, and I'm not sure how to start it.
It's on.
It's on. Oh, okay, good. Well, I don't have to worry about that. I am a third-generation resident of Mojave County. My family's been here for over 80 years. I am also a volunteer at the Western Arizona Humane Shelter, at the county shelter, over 60 hours a week. I give my time and my effort for that shelter. I am also the creator and the administrator of Kingman Pet Connection, a growing Mojave County-based pet networking group with over 1,900 of your constituents as members. And we have a problem. People tend to be very passionate about their families, their children, and their pets. Myself and my members are no exception to this. And when the county animal shelter and the terrible lack of adequate facilities therein was said to finally be important to the board, our collective joy was a tangible thing. But it's very fragile. As you can imagine, I am intimately acquainted with the conditions down at the shelter. 37 kennels with no drainage, open waste trenches between adoptable animals and the people that have the guts to come in to try to see them, do not make a shelter. Two small brick buildings that look like throwbacks from the industrial age, where there's, again, no drainage, no special facilities, and rolled-in steel kennels to house small dogs, cats, and puppies, do not make a shelter. There is no quarantine facility, so animals that come in on a bike quarantine are housed right next to adoptable pets with giant signs on their cages saying, "Stand back, don't touch, bite risk." And you watch adoptable people go around them and just not look at anyone nearby. There are, the intake facility is smaller than my living room, and I live in a modest home. There is no built-in kennels there either. There's no way to keep those animals coming in away from the rest of the animals in the shelter until they're determined whether they carry any kind of illness or if they are injured. It's so inadequate that it can't even be called humane and as stewards for these wards of the county, because that's what they are. It's up to us to provide for them the basics of safety, comfort, freedom from disease, and hope, and right now, we provide none of those things. In one month, approximately 400 pets will enter the care of the Mojave County, and despite the constant efforts of many, only 55 will ever leave simply because there is no space to give them a proper chance.
Ms. Glancy, how much more time do you need?
One sentence, please.
Okay.
This is not statistics to be proud of, and we would hope for more compassionate action from our county leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glancy.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lottie Benker, and I am the founder of Halt, Help Animals Lives Today.
Ma'am, if I could ask you for your address for the record before you begin?
I'm sorry?
Your address for the record before you begin.
Oh, 6625 Massachusetts Drive, Kingman.
Thank you very much.
All right. Number one, I wish you all a Happy New Year, and I hope we can work together to make this a better community. Number one, I came here 15 years ago to retire. Well, apparently, that's been far from that, because all I do is walk 12 hours a day to save animals' lives. Problem number one, the shelter was built in 1975, serving a community population of 27,000. For the records, 40 years later, we're over 200,000, and nothing has been done for the animals. That is a disgrace for anybody that loves animals in the county. Number two, the place is not only overcrowded, but we take out as many animals as we can, rehabilitate them, medicate them if necessary, and then transport them to other no-care adoption facilities. We have saved more than 5,000 lives, and I am proud to say that not one penny came from the county or from the state to do so. I hope to do a heck of a lot more if I had more support. So please, a shelter is not only imperative, it is way, way overdue. And I beg you, please, in your heart, if you care for animals as you care for people, give them the same rights as they deserve. They need love and compassion. They don't need to be euthanized without serendipity, because that's not even on the agenda. There's just so much going on in this county that it is overwhelming. So please, I beg you, help the animals. Thank you kindly, and I do wish you well.
Thank you, Ms. Benker.
Sometimes pictures speak louder than words. May I give you about three pages each that you can read at your own time?
Absolutely. If you give them to the clerk of the board, she'll make sure they get handed out to us.
All right, that's for the five supervisors and the remainder of the county. There you go. Thank you very much. And these are fact-checkers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Benker. The next speaker, I believe on a different subject, is Mark D. Shaver. Mr. Shaver, when you come down here, if you can state your name and your address, though I don't think you need to be prompted with us anymore.
The new year started, and last year, I presented this board with some basic information regarding cottage industries. And now that the general plan is in full swing, I, myself, and members of my community here, would like to encourage you to blow the dust off that stuff, take a look, and perhaps drop a bug in the ear of the subcommittee to include, in addition to the general plan, a section regarding cottage industries. Now that's out of the way. On a different note, as you can see here, we have a flyer, Mojave County General Plan, Plan Review. And in the blue circle, it says, "The following five-member committee has been appointed to represent each of the five supervisory district within Mojave County." Well, a funny thing happened at that first meeting, and I got it all on video, too. The chairman-elect decided that, in his words, he's not there to represent the districts or the people. It's all on video, and I posted it there, and I know one of you has actually seen it. Now, I encourage you to please look at the video, because this issue has to be addressed. The idea behind the recommendations to the board is supposed to be a collaboration between the citizens of Mojave County and local government, P&amp;Z, aka Subcommittee. He said, and it's on video, that the recommendations that the board's going to submit to you is that of their own. I'm kind of confused by what it says up here, that they were appointed to represent each of the five supervisory district. How can you represent your district and not represent the people in it? That's very confusing to me, and we try to play around with that, and no matter how much honey we try to pour over that, it just doesn't wash. It doesn't. It needs to be addressed, because it is supposed, and it's in the book, supposed to represent the values of the community. How can you do that if you're not even part of it? We looked at Arizona State Statute Regarding Public Participation. It does not mandate that you have a community committee appointed to the process, but it does not preclude it either. In other words, this board have chosen not to create a citizens committee. That's, you can debate that all you want, but that's the end result, we don't have one. But the comments made by the chairman regarding public participation and their ability to participate is definitely in question. One of the things he flat-out said, and it's on video, that this is not an answering-question session. Excuse me, that is the perfect time to raise answers and questions if the Subcommittee's going to recommend something to you that you're- going to recommend something to you that you're not uncomfortable with.
Mr. Shaver, have you concluded?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. -- or I'm not sure, I'm presuming, Lee May -- or Lee McWilliam. What, Miss Lee McWilliam. Ma'am, when you step up here, if you can give your name and address?
Yes. My name is Lee McWilliam, and I live at one-eight-one-four-five Orchid Drive, Dolan Springs. My telephone number is seven-oh-two-three-seven-one-two-two-two-nine. I'm here today to ask you to help with the planning that we're going through right now. We desperately need to have the cottage industry area of it approved. As you probably know, Dolan Springs has no industry. So we are made up mostly of mom-and-pop stores. Those people have to be in their stores daily, but it takes both of them just to keep the doors open, just to be there and greet the customers. So one of -- I belong now to the Joshua Tree Art Guild, and we are a bunch of artists that are trying to attract attention to our area with our different and varied types of art. And we've held several art shows. They have been successful, and we feel that if we were able to work from our homes and actually have a gallery or something that we could display, maybe not even on a daily basis or anything, but be able to put a sign out so that they know something is there. We have the traffic going up to the Skywalk, and it's automobiles. The buses go on, they're paid to go straight through, so they very seldom stop there. But we have a lot of cars that go through. We need that industry. We are a poor town. We look terrible. Everybody knows that. We have a record that everybody, you know, you say you're from Dolan Springs, they go, "Oh!" You know, like this. But it's not that way. We have a lot of really honest, hard-working people out there that are trying to supplement their incomes if they run Social Security and such, or they're just small business people that are working from their homes, cannot afford to pay a big rent or anything like that. So it's my feeling that with the art industry and getting customers to stop, that we would eventually be known, and it would help us, too, if you would just put our name on the maps coming out of the state and the county. We're not even on the maps, so we're like stepchildren out there. The other thing I want to say is I want to thank Jean Bishop. She's been coming out on a monthly basis. She's been out to help us with other things, and I just wanted her to know that we truly appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. William. Anthony Gafke, and I hope I pronounced that last name correctly.
That was perfect.
Excellent. And sir, when you step down, if you can state your name and address for the record?
I'm Anthony Gafke. My address is one-six-zero-four-nine North Maybell Drive, and my telephone number is two-seven-eight-one-seven-two-four, and I'm from Dolan Springs, Arizona. And I'd like to say thank you to Supervisor Bishop again for all that she's done to make the community feel like we really have some representation. The issue I would like to speak on is the fire department in Dolan Springs. It's been brought to my attention. You're going to receive an update today, and I request or be given options to choose one or choose a way to continue the Dolan Springs Fire Department, Rancho Mojave Fire Department. The only suggestion we didn't see there was to relieve Mr. Flynn from his duties and have the administrator continue along with his plan. He's done an excellent job. The administrator is currently the fire chief of the associated district, and one of the options is going to be to merge these two districts. I believe it's premature. We are understaffed. We could be adequately staffed with just one more position, but in the current plan, it hasn't been available. In the coming year, we could also build up a surplus that would allow it to go back to the Rancho Mojaves if that's what is chosen to do. Currently, most are in favor of merging it into the Consolidated Fire District, but they are not, at this time, able to offer us adequate staffing. So that's going to have to be an issue that's addressed. I'd like to also support the concept of people working from home. Those regulations are things that are for you, not necessarily for us. We have plenty of people working from home now, but those regulations have been adopted nationwide practically to adequately control it and give people some guidelines to go through so that they have the safety, they have the parking available, and they're able to operate a small business from their home, not just an office, but their actual business. The signage and a hundred different issues are in there. But it wouldn't take much to adopt it, and it doesn't take any to put it back onto the general plan, so it's at least considered with the updated general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gafke. Our last speaker is Stephen Robinson. Mr. Robinson, I'm sure you don't need the reminder, but I'll do it anyway. If you could state your name and your address before your remarks.
My name is Stephen Robinson. I live at thirty-four-thirty-nine North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Just one brief second. I wonder why we have office-in-home regulations for Golden Valley and other rural areas where we have one-to-five-to-twenty-or-forty-acre parcels. Office-in-home regulations are for developments where you don't want retail businesses running multiple people into a small development, and I fail to comprehend why we have those. I have a question. On page ninety-five of the approved budget, the six-year capital improvement plan shows a beginning balance of eighteen-point-five million dollars for fiscal year fifteen. However, in the county excise tax account at the treasurer's office, the capital improvement plan fund, and the jail debt service fund, the total of those funds is four-and-a-half million dollars beginning the balance. You may know that I've kind of been fanatically looking through the budget and the finances of the county, and I can't find where the other fourteen million dollars lies. Either it's outside the county or it's built into other funds. Some of those funds that I think it may be in, and maybe this is the answer, is I've found that there are several internal service funds which are part of the general fund budget, but like, for instance, the Vehicle Replacement Fund shows six-and-a-half-million-dollar beginning balance, which is about six years' worth of purchases. Of the Motor Pool Fund, which is an internal service fund servicing vehicles, maintenance, has one-point-seven million dollars in that fund on a two-million-dollar budget, and they receive over two million dollars in revenue from the various departments. The Communication Funds with about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, and they receive that much, you know, that much money from the different departments, has one-point-two-million dollars in it. And lastly, of the Landfill Fund, which I know has to cover post-closure costs, has an incredible thirteen million dollars in that fund. And as of the last year's audit that we have available, it showed that they needed six-point-four million for post-closure costs. And I'm just wondering, why is there so much money in these funds? And if they're designated for capital improvements, why they're not in a separate fund account for capital improvements? I think the people here talking about, you know, a new animal shelter would really like to know, where are these monies, and why aren't they showing up where they should so that the people can see and have -- and their opinion and desire for a new animal shelter can be appropriately addressed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anyone else who has filled out a call to the public forum which we've missed? Going on, the presentation from an update of the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District presented by John Flynn Administrator. Mr. Flynn, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman Moss and Supervisors, Staff. John Flynn, the Administrator, you're appointed Administrator for Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District, and Chief Pat Moore from the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District, who is the contract chief for the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. Quick report, quick status report for you this morning. Just a little bit of background. It was February sixth, two thousand and thirteen, when I was appointed the Administrator. That's close to two years ago, so time has moved past. The district was financially insolvent, and we implemented a plan in conjunction with the attorney's office to mitigate the financial insolvency and continue service delivery going forward. The financial workout plan was developed by myself and implemented in conjunction with the Mojave County Finance Department and the treasurer's office. It involved getting the district back to a financially sustainable and stable position. As of February sixth, you can see on the slide there, we were about seven-hundred-thousand, approximately upside-down, had spent -- the district had expended a lot of their tax money by February, and we're going to finish the year insolvent. We implemented a recovery plan in conjunction with county staff. Staffing reduced, all the nonessential expenditures eliminated. We sold nonessential assets, disposed vehicles that were on lease purchase, and curtailed service delivery outside the district's jurisdictional boundaries. Our current financial status, we don't have a -- our revolving line of credit balance is at a zero. All of our lease purchase obligations have been extinguished. All payroll and vendor obligations are current, and as of right now, we are -- as of December thirty-first, our loan balance to the county is one-hundred-and-twenty-four-five-forty-eight. I would point out, though, that we also have a positive balance in our non-tax account of one-hundred-and-forty-four-three-ninety-nine, held by the county treasurer. So with those two things together, you can see that we're financially in the black right now. That won't last but another month or so because taxes have come in, and we'll spend a little bit before second half taxes come in. Revenues have exceeded expenditures through the first six months of the fiscal year, and we're on target to operate as a financially independent agency as of May two thousand and fifteen. We believed it was going to be around March, but revenues have been a little short. I will say that the financially independent agency status will require the establishment of the revolving line of credit with the county servicing bank, starting with the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and fifteen. We just won't have enough excess funds when we finish this fiscal year to cover us through July, August, and September before taxes come in. We'll be able to cover part of that. There would just be a little shortfall. There's our loan projection balances. You can see that at one point, we owed Wells Fargo better part of almost a half a million dollars, and of course, we owed the county that much, too, as the county supported continuing at least basic operations out in the Dolan Springs and Meadview area. And I know that the community is very appreciative of the work that the county board of supervisors and county staff has done to ensure that these people have emergency medical services and fire services, at least on a very limited basis. To your budget projections, we're right on target on our two-year budget projections. I would note that the district right now is running on a tax rate override, which I implemented. The tax rate's three-sixty-eight. That reverts back to three-and-a-quarter for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and fifteen. That piece of legislation sunsets. It was temporary in nature. We operated about one-point-one million. A great amount of that has to do with trying to repay all of our loans. And Chief Moore, I'll let you kind of wander, walk through the operations and service delivery.
Good morning. We had been previously here, and we have discussed our staffing model out there, and it's really unchanged at this point. We're still staffing three -- attempting to staff, fully staff, three firefighters per day. We do two in the Dolan Springs community, one in the Meadview area as well. It's not ideal, but it's the most that we can put out there, is the highest number of people we can put out there and still maintain our ability to be sustainable financially. A couple of operational things that we have done to improve service to those communities is transition us into the Kingman Area Dispatch, which was Northern Arizona Consolidated Golden Valley, the seat of Kingman, Pinion Pine, Pine Lake are all partners in that, and that has increased our service delivery by reducing our response times. We've implemented the policies that we currently use in my organization. We've done a couple of other operational things as well. We've purchased a new used ambulance, which has reduced our maintenance and overhead because all of the fleet out there had over two-hundred-thousand miles on it, so you could see it was in need of repair and upgrade, as well as we're working on replacing some and upgrading some of our radio communications. We've been out and essentially worked really extensively to use personal and professional contacts to upgrade their equipment. We've been able to get them some thermal imaging cameras and try the best that we can to improve that service for both of those communities. Next, you know, I'll turn it back to John, but the next step in the process is where do we go from here now that we're back to being a financially viable agency?
So Supervisors, two years removed from when I was appointed Administrator just about early February, there's really two options. One is to consolidate or merge the district into an adjacent fire district. We've talked about that. We've kind of set the foundation potentially to do that. That is one option. And the second option is for the Board of Supervisors to call for a special election of district board members. The public would elect five board members at a date to be determined. I'd leave that up to the election staff to know what dates those were, and then the Administrator would transition the district back over to a local five-member governing board. So the district will be financially sustainable as of July one going into that fiscal year, and certainly be -- I work for you all, and so it would be at your behest what you would want me to do going forward, either a special -- if you'd call a special election or whether you want us to continue to work towards consolidating or merging the district into a neighboring facility.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Is there any questions from the board for Mr. Flynn? I'll start with Supervisor Angus.
No, not for me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
The only comment I'd like to make is I appreciate what you've done, of course, Mr. Flynn and Chief Moore. You guys have held it together, and we're on our way now to putting the fire department back into service. That can be something that the Dolan Springs and Meadview people will be proud of, whether or not it's consolidation or a special election.
Supervisor Watson?
Just want to say how much we appreciate all the work and all the planning that's been put into this program. I realize that when you took it over, it was just in a complete disarray. Very proud of the way Mojave County and the way you've put it back together again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Couldn't have done it without your help.
Supervisor Johnson?
Obviously, I must have been sleeping during some of this, but you got us into a deal that was illegal with the state by loaning monies. Not you personally, but this board got ourselves into it. What is the interest rate that we're charging that fire district?
I have to defer that to county staff, but I believe the last time that I spoke specific to that issue with the treasurer's office, that the amount of interest that the funds that were loaned to LMRFD exceeds the amount that you get in your investment pool, so that it was a net positive to the county. And the district would not have -- would not be able to secure that credit line anywhere else, and certainly not at that rate. If we were going to secure a credit line outside of the Board of Supervisors authority to do that, we would pay a really high rate, if we could even get one.
Right. I understand. And I don't know if you can answer, Mr. Flynn or if Mr. Ekstrom. Once the district has paid us back, what are our obligations? Do we -- can we walk away? Are we now in charge of this? Because Mr. Flynn's talking about a consolidation, which I think that's up to the people, not up to us. Or is the five-member board, can we just call for an election? Or we have to do nothing and let the people decide?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Johnson, there are two options. Either at your behest, you can direct me, and I will move towards either consolidating or merging, and that's a pretty complicated process. That's an option. Or you can call for a special election of board members, and then the communities of Meadview and Dolan Springs will elect five residents, qualified electors, to serve on that board, and I would transition the district back to local control.
But I mean, the people of that district and their board obviously let it go down to where we had to come in and bail it out. So we're basically forcing them to continue with the fire district now that they couldn't afford before. They don't have the option of saying, "Hey, we don't want a fire district."
There's a statutory reference that allows for dissolution of fire districts, but it is of the -- it follows the same -- basically, it follows the same process and framework that that it does for formation. So you've got to have a petition of property owners, they present it to the Board of Supervisors, say we want to dissolve the fire district, then that would go to a vote, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't looked at that statutory reference in a long time, so I'm kind of trying to do that from memory.
Okay, and you say that as of May, you'll be able to pay us off, and then the Board will be able to decide, and I guess the only option you're basically giving us besides a consolidation, which I don't think the Board should decide that for the people, would be just to say, let's have an election for five members, and then the community can decide. You were talking about they're going to need a line of credit, that's going to be awfully hard to get now, isn't it?
Well, I work, I have ongoing work with the other fire districts in the state, and we work with the community, or the county servicing bank, they represent other counties as well, I have a relationship with them. I don't foresee that we wouldn't be able to get at least a very limited line of credit that would be able to allow us to move forward for the district. It will be very, let me just say that it will be, it will be hit or miss there for the first part of the next fiscal year, because our line of credit will be very limited, so we'll have to be very, we'll have to be very diligent about managing the funds. Yes, Sir.
Is that a line of credit needed because, is there, do you know, in that district, is there a large delinquency in taxes?
We projected 120, approximately 126,000 in delinquent taxes out of a total collection of, right in the vicinity of 650,000 in property taxes, so what's 20, about 22%? So yes, Sir, there is a high delinquency rate. And we build that into the budget, though. When I project out tax rates, I build the delinquencies right in off the top, so that we don't think we're going to have 650, and we end up with less than 500,000, and then we end up in the back, back in the same situation.
Also, and I know you're involved statewide in this, is 20% a pretty high, or is that a pretty average for fire districts?
It's very high.
Very high?
It's very high.
That's all the question, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Mr. Flynn, I would like to thank you for your services to Mojave County. Mojave County did have to take over this fire district, so we're essentially running it to make sure that the health, safety, and welfare of those residents of that district receive the services they need. I believe, based upon your presentation, the next step is for us to make a decision. We can't do that during your presentation. So I would like County Administrator Hendricks to confer with you, Mr. Flynn, if you two can work together, and present our options to how we transition from this point, with a pro-con analysis at a meeting, which will enable us to take timely action and still affect one or more different possible results.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Moss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We take a short break, Mr. Chairman. We have gone very long, as more normal than we normally do at the beginning stage of this, so before we move on to our consent agenda, we'll take a quick five-minute break. All right, folks, we're going to reconvene this meeting. Going on to the consent agenda, the following items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion, with no separate discussion of said items unless a Board member's sole request. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there anything that you wish to remove Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
None.
Supervisor Johnson?
None.
All right, having said that, may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve item 624.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, going on to item 25. Item 25A, Discussion of Possible Action. Ray acknowledged a completed design feasibility study for the proposed Mojave County Courthouse report from the National Center for State Courts. We have people who have filled out request-to-speak forms on this item, 25, three of them to be exact. We'll start with Carrie Glancy, Ms. Carrie Glancy. If you can step forward and state your name and your address.
Mr. Chairman, respected members of the Board, my name is Carrie Glancy, and I currently reside at 2001 Western Avenue in Kingman, and I am opposed to the approval of item 25 on the agenda at this time. As I have stated previously, I'm a dedicated volunteer for county projects with, and as well as an active voice across the county in regards to some of those projects, the current animal facilities, et cetera. I am also the voice for 1,900 people, and we are unconvinced about the dire need to immediately go forward with these approvals for the courthouse project, especially if doing so takes complete priority over every other project, as has been reported in the local media. Is our hope that the grand scope of the courthouse expansion will not keep us from fulfilling our responsibilities to the other issues in the county that are equally deserving of attention, but our fear that once this final nod goes through to begin all the preparations at a suggested location, the focus of the county will become exceedingly narrow. If the media reports are correct that 100% of the county's vital resources will be funneled into the courthouse project alone once a site has been approved, the voiceless wards of the county, such as the 5,000 companion animals a year, whose very lives depend on our help, and the quick and effective expansion of facilities, will once again be passed over, as they have so many times before. We do not dispute the future need for an expanded court capacity, as it is an aspect of community growth, but we are also intimately acquainted with the direct cost of completely ignoring other issues and other projects. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we urge you to examine this decision and the effect that the approval to move ahead at this location, or any for that matter at this time, may have on the rest of the issues before you. Please put our fears to rest and solidify our trust in your dedication to all of the important issues at hand. I respectfully thank you for hearing my concern and the concern of many of us in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Glancy. Next is Ms. Denise BenSusan. Ms. BenSusan, if you can step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that, I didn't know you were going to be so quick.
My apologies ma'am.
Denise BenSusan, 4811 East Cuyahoga, Kingman, Arizona 86409. I'm District 1. And we are talking about 25A, B, and C, correct? I'll just...
Ms. BenSusan, you are listed for all three items, but if you'd like, you may speak on all three now for convenience purposes.
Yes, I'll just, matter of fact, because I have a very limited thing to say. My concern right now is that everybody's on such a tight budget, everybody's taking back and struggling, and we're also, new laws are being created to limit the victimless crimes, so we should, our intent should be less incarceration. So the expansion of courthouse and jail space, to me, should be maybe secondary to, if we have extra money going towards education, because the education of our people here locally will ultimately, will need less jail space, and will need less court cases, and I think that for now, I think it's a waste. I think we're leaning towards, as I said, victimless crimes will not be a heavy caseload for us, so I think we could make do. So I think we should reconsider, if we have extra money, or any available money, directing that towards our educational level. Arizona's notorious for not spending hardly anything compared to the rest of the nation per student, so, and that's pretty statistical, that's not just me. So I would appreciate, I am, I'm against expanding all this right now, maybe directing any additional funds in other more worthy areas, and thank you for your time. Did you have any questions for me?
No, thank you, Ms. Susan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Anderson, Kip Anderson, this is your item, would you like to come down and make some comments? And while he's coming down, if I can inquire the County Administrator, this is just to, this subsection is just to acknowledge receipt of the report, is that correct? That's how I read it?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, yeah, I had them break it out because they had too many things, so the idea was, so instead you got tied down with, you know, one might win, one might lose.
So you're the blame then.
I'm the one to blame.
All right.
So we could acknowledge the receipt and then determine a side, so it was doable so we could get things passed.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, or Supervisor Johnson. Kip, if you could.
Yes, Chairman Moss, Supervisors, Supervisor Johnson, thank you for your suggestion. Usually when I get those calls, I'm a little leery, but I was very excited, I said I support what Supervisor Johnson suggests, so thank you. Yes, his first item is just to accept the report. We worked with the National Center, we appreciate the Board supporting us and working with them, the funds to do that. We think they did, they came out, they were able to reevaluate the options that were available for us. They provided this report to kind of pull that all together, so I think at this point, I hopefully, I recognize there's some concerns from the public, but I would certainly hope you're able to accept this report as it's submitted.
Is there any questions on 25A from you Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Bishop? Supervisor Johnson? I'm sorry.
No, I like to...
I looked at him, I met him, and I was looking at you. Supervisor Watson?
No, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, to acknowledge the completed design feasibility study for proposed Mojave County Courthouse and report from the National Center for State Courts.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And as far as discussion, oh, go ahead.
Before, as we go into discussion, we'll go, any discussion? Supervisor Angus?
None.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was placed on, what, December, we had this to begin with, and we had our presentation with no backup. This was placed on the agenda again with no backup. Backup didn't come until Monday, backups due Thursday at noon. Public didn't get it until Wednesday. I think that's where a lot of the, I mean, besides the opposition, a lot of problems are coming from, us not, you know, moving ahead on a project that's millions of dollars without having the backup, that's the only concern I had.
Okay. I will note that the report is dated January 12, and I'm certain that Mr. Anderson got it on the, over to us as quickly as feasibly could. I will say that I read the report, and I just wanted to confirm a few things, because I did, these jumped out at me amongst other issues, is that there was at least a half dozen security issues posing a threat to the well-being of staff and the public and our inmates at the current courthouse, is that correct?
That is correct, and if I could just elaborate, you know, that's been a concern since we started with these evaluations back in 2006, 2007. You know, I recognize, you know, I was just, you know, last week, we had a four-defendant case going on upstairs in the old courtroom, we had a murder trial going on in the courtroom at the same time. These individuals are coming into the courthouse, there's no holding facilities for them, there's nowhere to have them, keep them, we have arraignments going on every day, these individuals have to sit in the hallway next, next to members of the public. The Sheriff's Office does an excellent job in trying to staff that with security, but, you know, they can't bring over multiple people, so they're limited on who they can bring over. But one incident, one of those individuals doing something, getting crazy or lurching out, reaching out to members of the public who are in the hallways, or our staff, could create a huge liability for the court and the county. So, you know, in today's world, that, you know, you don't do that. You have secured hallways, you have separate paths, access points, and so that is a huge concern.
And I will, I believe it was a defense attorney once upon a time told me many years ago, you can't really control crazy. ago, "You can't really control crazy." Maybe it was a law enforcement officer, I'm not sure. The other thing I read in there which jumped out at me is that the courthouse is not currently considered ADA compliant, is that correct?
And Chairman Moss, two points, yes, it is not ADA compliant. The, the security concern is, is obviously a tantamount and paramount issue. We did have recently, I don't recall if it was a relative or a family friend of a victim that attempted to bring a weapon into the courthouse to get at the criminal defendant, the perpetrator of the crime against the victim. Security was able to discern the weapon and, and remove it. We have issues. We have issues with respect to the transport. I mean, nothing more can be said than, you know, the two individuals that were able to escape and, and turn around and go on a multi-state venture and ultimately kill someone in Mexico. These are the current issues that we continuously face and have to deal with every day. When we did a previous PowerPoint presentation concerning the security interests and needs of the courthouse, we had up on the screen the defendants that were standing in the hallway. These individual defendants are in the hallway, yes, it's behind the locked portion going to judicial chambers, however, that is also exactly where the members of the jury have to go from the courtroom to the jury room. You have jury members who are, you know, walking past criminal defendants. And the reason that we put up that particular slide was not only to show that you have jury members that are walking directly next to the defendants, but also, there was an incident whereby a defense attorney had turned around, spoke with one of his clients while in that hallway, put his file down, within the file was his cellphone. Woman, the criminal defendants, took his cellphone. Now you have a prison contraband issue, which brings another court case back to the court, but also you can't obviously have a cellphone in a jail because now you have the means to communicate with the outside, talk about when a transport may occur, so that you can turn around and maybe conceivably, you know, create that security issue where, again, as they leave the unsecured location in the street to the courthouse, that, you know, that individual might have help being able to get away from custody. These are security concerns that we face daily.
I think that, for the, that was for the edification of the public, some of the issues that jumped out at me, I won't go any further since we're only on twenty-five A. We have a motion, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you brought up the security, and so people don't think that it's total chaos, you have the ability to do video arraignments, and also there is a court over at the new jail that you can use?
We currently use the courthouse jail for arraignments. We do have video arraignments, however, a criminal defendant has the right to appear in court specifically, you know, for any hearing, as well as sentencing. You know, these are constitutional rights that we just simply cannot, you know, do a video, you know, conference for a sentencing. The transport will occur. Obviously, the criminal defendant has a right to be present in court, you know, a constitutional right to confront their accusers.
Isn't there a courtroom at the new jail?
The courtroom would not be able to accommodate all of the different criminal cases that we process. We have three judges dedicated primarily to criminal cases.
Oh, well, I just mean, if you're, if you have such a case that is so high-profile, where you're worried about security, and not every one of them is, because they're all innocent until proven guilty.
Well, if it's a high-profile case, we have already encountered that issue. We had to do the arraignment at the courthouse on one high-profile case because the public has a right to also come in and watch the proceedings. And the jail courtroom could not accommodate the public, let alone the various defendants, defense counsel, prosecutor, and the court, you know, to do other arraignments.
All right. And also on security, I think it's something that, that I've noticed in our, in our courts, this recent attack in France was because of employees. That's how they got in. And I believe that if we're going to have security in our building, it needs to apply to everybody, employees and, and the public, they all need to go through the security so we have an idea of who's in the building and what, what has been let into the building. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. With that being said, do we have a motion to approve, we have a motion to approve item twenty-five A. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going on to item twenty-five B. We do have one speaker signed up for this, that would be Stephen Robinson, and that's Discussion and Possible Action, Ray, determine an appropriate site for the new courthouse to be constructed upon. Mr. Robinson?
Steve Robinson, thirty-four thirty-nine North Bowie Road, Golden Valley. I wanted to speak to this issue because I saw the two options. The option, while I am a lover of history and a student of history and appreciate the archaeological significance of our existing courtroom, I think the overall cost of having the courthouse literally next to the jail is the one that provides the greatest degree of safety for everybody concerned, and is much cheaper to build when you consider trying to retrofit the existing jail. I am certain that there is a future for the existing courthouse as some kind of a museum or something like that, because it's something I would never want to see that building demolished, whereas the old jail, I think, is way overdue. I will take just a minute to speak on the issue of victimless crimes. Nationally, the statistics show that twelve percent of crimes are dealing with drugs. Only four percent, and, and this is responding to the whole process of accepting this plan, so I hope I'm not out of order, but of, we cannot, we cannot limit the demand, quote, "the demand for" court services by saying, "We're not going to recognize crimes that are happening." Crimes happen because people just don't respect the law. I wish more people did. And whether, you know, the amount of what is so-called victimless crimes is minimal at the, at the highest. Like I said, only four percent of crimes reported nationally are drug possession, eight percent are, you know, trafficking of drugs and narcotics. So, whether we want to admit it or not, there is a need for crime prevention using both the sheriff's department and the judicial department. But I think, again, going back to that last point, my first point, the best site for protecting our citizenry would be option A in that plan, and that's what I would encourage the board to look at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Anderson, anything to add to twenty-five B, which is the determine an appropriate site for the new courthouse to be constructed upon?
Chairman Moss, Supervisors, you know, we, we feel there's a need for a new courthouse. We're supportive of, of the report, the options that are provided. In having meetings with the city of Kingman, you know, they were certainly supportive of us looking at the site by the, by the courthouse. There's something to be said about, you know, keeping it there, maintaining some continuity, the historic nature of the courthouse and for Mojave County. You know, this year we'll be celebrating the hundredth year of the occupation of that building in August of nineteen fifteen is when they moved into that courthouse. And I note the clerk of the court is here, Verlin Tenell, she, she works in the basement, the main, the first floor of that courthouse, and little has changed, other than, you know, I know some walls have been moved around, but some of those cement walls you can't move around, the pipes are still there. Talk about working in a location that hasn't changed in a while. Verlin and her staff are there, day in and day out, doing a wonderful job, serving the, the citizens of Mojave County. But, but I think we're, well, probably I should defer to, to the presiding judge. We're supportive of your decision, we hope that you will, will make a decision. I personally am leaning towards option B. I recognize what has been said, and we're hopeful that something can be done. Judge, did you, I'll let the judge...
May please, Chairman, Board Members, Council, Administration. Actually, option B is the cheaper alternative than option A, and certainly in, you know, tight fiscal years, especially with other interests that, you know, have been presented to the board, you know, going with the less expensive option is, is a more preferable option. The courts would defer to the board to the extent that we can accept either option. However, the court would recommend option B. The judges did specifically vote on this option. They did, as to the two options, the overwhelming support was for the new courthouse next to the existing courthouse, as well as renovating the old courthouse. It would also probably help with respect to transition of courts. In other words, the superior court, once the new courthouse was built, could move out. That would allow for the renovation at a later time of the, the existing courthouse to then move the justice court in. From an operational standpoint, it would be very effective. With respect to the transport of, of prisoners, the jail commander, Don Bischoff, had commented to me that the transport of prisoners, really, the issue with that is not obviously taking the prisoner out of jail and putting them in the vehicle at the jail, is not the actual driving or transportation from the jail to the courthouse. The security issue has been and still remains, once they get to the courthouse and moving them out of the vehicle into the courthouse, and then once in the courthouse, you know, the security issues with respect to its access to staff and, you know, the court patrons. Both of the options provide for a secured Sallyport, both options provide for holding cells, separate access for the criminal defendants to the courtrooms, away from the general public, as well as court staff. So, yes, there might be a few dollars more with respect to the gas going to the, you know, existing courthouse, but from that standpoint, it would be business as usual. Both design concepts take care of the security issue that the sheriff's office has delineated.
Okay. Thank you, Judge Gerler. I was remiss, and thank you, Mr. Anderson, for noting that Verlin Tenell is here. Does Ms. Tenell have anything to add to this? I know she's probably the longest-serving elected official in that courtroom, so maybe we should confer with her. And if I'm wrong about that, I apologize.
I appreciate the opportunity. I really didn't plan on speaking, and I was kind of worried when Kip talked about the building being a hundred years old, that he might say I was there a hundred years ago. But, it's actually been thirty-five years, and for thirty-five years, we've had these discussions with various board of supervisors, and we still sit in the basement, and we still watch the pipes leak on our desk. And, you know, last week, somebody came and said, "I have no place to put this chair that was a, used in the murder case last week. It's sitting in my office. We have no storage, we have no space. We just continue to, you know, find nooks and crannies that are just completely inappropriate for what we deal with. Our files that are supposed to be in vaults are just scattered. You've been to my office, you've seen files just everywhere." I think when the, the increase for the taxes went into effect years ago, it was for the purpose of building a courthouse, and we're still now revisiting that, that same topic. It doesn't, it's not ever going to replace the need for a animal shelter, but it's, it's likewise an appropriate use of county funds, and it's something that really is needed. The location, like I say, I've been through so many of these discussions, that the location just isn't important to me. What's important is the integrity of what we do in our offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tenell. All right. Is there any questions from the board, from anybody that has spoken? Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Bishop? Supervisor Watson? Supervisor Johnson? All right. Having said that, I can have a motion on item twenty-five B of the agenda to determine an appropriate site for the new courthouse to be constructed on.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the option B, and, and I think it's very important because of the historical value of the courthouse. And so, that being in mind, I have other things I'd like to say, but as far as the motion, I just make a motion that we approve option B.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Supervisor Angus?
None for me.
Supervisor Bishop?
Absolutely. The historical courthouse, a hundred years, it's part of Mojave County, it's part of the love of, of Kingman. It's, I'm a big supporter of the revitalization of downtown Kingman, and I think that's part of it. To use option A would be to abandon the historical courthouse and the addition, and would have another couple of buildings that would be an eyesore in Kingman, and it, it would make a nice museum, I agree, but it might take another decade to get financially to the position that we could do that. So, I just, I think the transition makes it easy. If we could build the, the new courthouse using option B, we could move superior court into the first phase and then transition a little slower to the other if need be financially. So, those are just my comments, and I'm very excited about the option B.
Supervisor Watson?
The sooner that we can get it done, the better.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
Obviously, I don't agree with that site. I think, without offending some other building in the county, I believe this is probably the only, or the best and most well-known historic building that we have in Mojave County, and it should be preserved. If anything's going to be done, I think it and the old jail that's next to it should be turned over to either Historical Society or to our Parks Department, someplace where you could still, even if the court still wanted to maintain some control of it for weddings or something like that. I think the new site by the jail gives us the security and everything else we need. At this time, I think by keeping buildings downtown Kingman, we bring nothing to the table. Our people go home at five o'clock. Looking at the cons that were listed, it was listed because, oh, well, lawyers have located their offices around it. I don't believe it's that much farther for the lawyers to drive to the, the jail now because they have to go there to see most of their clients unless they're in civil. So, I obviously think the jail site would be the most...
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. My comments are that I would also support option B, and it's primarily for two interrelated reasons. One, and both those reasons are money. One, I don't want to undermine the economy of downtown Kingman, which are tax-paying businesses and which support us, and I believe if you do remove the courthouse from that location, there will be a serious economic downturn in an already suffering area. Secondly, is cost of construction, and that's probably the paramount concern. When I was originally presented with these, these ideas, I think it was a forty-five million Law &amp; Justice Center, we now are down, and then it went to a twenty-five million dollar courthouse, and now we're down to, I believe it's a fifteen to sixteen million addition and renovation plan, which leads to some of the concerns that the public has announced, is if we do this, we need to keep it most, as most cost-effective as possible, so that our remaining budgetary capacity could deal with other issues, such as the animal shelter. When it comes down to the historicity, hystocracy, the historical significance, I'll go with that phrase, of the, of the building, that is a concern. It's a much lighter concern, a much lesser concern to me. Really, it has to do with the economy, it has to do with the cost of construction, and has to be attempting to deal with other priorities, such as the animal shelter. So I personally support option B. Having said that, is there anything anyone else would like to add? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's four to one, is that correct? Jenny, thank you. Item twenty-five C, Discussion and Possible Action, further action is appropriate for the design and construction of a new courthouse. Twenty-five C. There is no one scheduled to speak on this issue, so I'll go with Kip. And Judge Gerler, I apologize. Judge, I see Kip's name and Kip Anderson's name on these headers, so I have an easy prompt.
You know, I'll defer to the presiding judge on this.
I would too, that's a smart move.
Again, may it please the Chair, honorable Board Members, Council, and Administration, as our clerk... As our clerk, Verlin Tenell, has commented, you know, this has been a 35-year odyssey. Um, you know, a request to, you know, build a new courthouse began with Presiding Judge Leonard Langford, and went through Presiding Judge Gary Pope, and to Presiding Judge Randy, Randall Bartlett, and Presiding Judge Rick Weiss. Um, you know, the county has had a history of, you know, a Band-Aid approach, and I have to give some credit to, you know, Ron Walker's administration, that we no longer look at a Band-Aid approach. We look at curing the issue. We look at curing the problems. We have, you know, previously identified security concerns and the other concerns with the existing structure. The court has taken this project as far as it can go without further support and direction from the board. The next logical step would be the retention of an architect. We would request the board to, um, direct procurement, to do an RFP for the retention of an architect. As far as a funding source, and Mr. Robinson referred to this earlier, uh, we do have the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund. In 2005, it was created. It had a $3 million general fund seed money utilized to create it. As Mr. Robinson commented, there is 6.8 million in the fund. For the past two years, I've been speaking with County Administrator Mr. Hendricks and Previous Finance Director John Timko. We have always contemplated, you know, accessing this fund. Administration's belief is that $3 million in the, the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund is more than sufficient, uh, to meet county needs. The general fund monies would leave 3.8 million in that fund. The projected, um, cost of an architect would not even approach the $3 million. The high projected cost for both the renovation and the new building is 21 and 1/2 million. I've been informed that you can reasonably anticipate anywhere from a 7% to 10% cost of the projected construction costs as what the architect's fee will be. Um, I believe that there will be competitive building. There are local architects that are very familiar, getting teams together with respect to the project. When we presented the PowerPoint presentation with the National Center for State Court Individuals, uh, after that meeting, I was introduced to a architect out of Phoenix that did the jail. Uh, I've been advised that there is statewide interest in this project, because there are not that many projects out there, um, which tells me that there would be competitive bidding. You know, competitive bidding on a 21 million, or 20 million, or 19 million dollar project, um, because the, the plans should include both the courthouse and the renovation, even if, you know, we phase in and don't do the renovation of the courthouse until a later date. You know, we're generally looking at anywhere from a million five to a million eight, maybe $2 million. And that would leave $1 million of general fund money in the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund that could help start, you know, addressing issues like an animal shelter. So, we would respectfully request the board considering approving the use of the general fund monies on a lateral transfer from the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund and direct procurement to issue an RFP, uh, for the retention of an architect, because without the retention of an architect, the project is simply at a standstill, like it has been then for the past 35 years.
Is there anything else from the board that they would like to ask the, Mr. Anderson or Judge Gerler? Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
None of them, no.
Okay. And item 25C, may I have a motion?
Oh, wait, for discussion, though. I'd like to.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay. It has nothing to do with the courts.
Okay. Thank you very much, Judge Gerler, and Court Administrator Anderson.
I think what the board needs to look at, we need to look at money first before we decide, you know, where we're going to go, how, how the funds are going to be, where they're coming from. Do we have Administrator Hendricks, somebody here from Finance who can address what the quarter cent sales tax, uh, has in it, because that's where the money will have to come from? Obviously, I'm opposed. I, I'm a little shocked that another department would be saying we should use, uh, vehicle replacement money. That was put in there so we have a self-sustaining fund now, so that every year, departments don't have to come back and, and ask for their money. I mean, if you look at the cities in, in our county and probably throughout the state, they have gone without vehicle replacement, um, or updating. When I first got into office, one of the problems we had was, the Sheriff's Department had vehicles with over 200,000 miles out on the field. We have since found a remedy for that, so that this board and, and your folks' time up here has never had anybody coming up saying, "Oh, we're, our vehicles are getting over. We have vehicles that are unsafe. What can you do? Can you pull in the general fund?" And that's because of, of the plan that we put in place before. So, I think rating that fund would be, um, not a good idea, but if we have the Finance Director or somebody.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson.
Ms. County Administrator Hendricks. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll, I'll try to address as much of the questions as I can, uh, from my chair. So, and then if I need, I, I can call on our Acting Finance Director to assist me. But, uh, basically, uh, we tried to do some, as, as close of projections as we possibly could on where we're at, uh, in regard to the Vehicle Replacement Fund. And, um, not to mention, uh, Steve Robinson's name too much today, he mentioned a fund of about 16 million. We actually have 15 million in our Wells Fargo Trust account for the purpose of buildings, and that's, that fund consists of, uh, monies from the quarter cent sales tax, and also monies that were augmented through the general fund, uh, deposits into that particular account. And it is documented in our budget process. So, it's not a hidden fund, but it is, uh, a fund that Mr. Robinson identified, but it's specifically for the buildings, and that's, that's where that 16 million came from. And I'm glad I got a chance to at, at least address that. Basically, uh, you know, when we made projections for our five-year capital building improvement programs, uh, past Finance Director, John Timko, made aggressive projections, but we also had an aggressive list that we wanted to try to accomplish on our building program. And, uh, um, this year, you know, in making the projections, we looked at last year's revenues, and we collected approximately 6.2 million dollars last year, a little bit over that in our sales tax. And so, uh, trying to be a little bit conservative, uh, one of the, um, main goals that this administration would have is to try to pay off our jail early. And so, we took a look at what our finances were, and even with conservative projections, if we were looking at, uh, receiving about 6.1 million, which is less than what we received last year in our sales tax, and if we paid off our jail in 2016, at the end of 2016, June of 2016, we would be saving about 2.5 million in, in the overall cost of what was originally projected on that payoff. So, it's extremely important to try to do that. You know, a 2.5 million dollar savings is extremely beneficial to the county. We believe, uh, with our conservative estimates of 6.1 and not using the 6.2 million dollars, and these numbers are this morning's numbers, they're, they're brand new. Or, or I would have provided them to the board, but, uh, we would be able to realize our goal without augmenting the fund at all, uh, of paying off the jail in 2016, just by projecting a 6.1 million dollar, uh, quarter cent sales tax revenue source. So, uh, uh, that goal is going to be achieved regardless of what I believe the board decides to do today. There was mention of, uh, additional funds, uh, immediate funds that could be available. Uh, the, uh, Judge Gerler is correct that, uh, $3 million was actually, uh, provided from the general fund as seed money for our vehicle replacement fund, and we've been able to grow that fund from the $3 million to a, a healthy 6.8 million dollars, and I, I can verify that. I verified that last week, that we actually have 6.8 million dollars in the vehicle replacement fund. And regardless of what y'all do today, um, it would be prudent for us to come back at some future date and ask for those funds to be allocated to a different source, and my recommendation would be that those funds would be reallocated to the, our building program, so that we can, um, not pit project against project in the future. You know, uh, I hate seeing that. I hate seeing projects pitted against each other, because what ends up happening is nothing gets done. Instead of realizing that somebody has to be first and somebody has to be second, the overall goal is to keep adequate priorities and to try to accomplish everybody's priorities. And I, I do want to say that I believe, you know, uh, the, the animal shelter is a very worthy priority and was listed very highly on the board's priorities when we talked about this last time. So, um, if the board wanted to move forward with, uh, trying to procure the services of an architect, I, I, from an administrator point of view, believe the funds could be made available, and we could come up with a plan to bring forward to the board to approve, uh, with the understanding that, uh, unless there's an alternate funding source, a long-term funding source that's established or, or, uh, perpetuated, that, uh, we wouldn't be able to proceed with a, uh, a court building project until we have that funding source secured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Absolutely. Supervisor Johnson?
Uh, Mr. Hendricks, you say right now you have 15 million in the quarter cent sales tax?
What we currently have in the quarter cent sales tax is, uh, in the Wells Fargo account, we have 15, uh, uh, about, uh, 15.1 million. Uh, with the other building account, which is our 410 and 383, we have a total of 18.354 million. Uh, and like I said, projecting that we get about, uh, between 6 million and 6.2 million dollars in our sales tax, we'd have sufficient monies to pay off our jail. Payoff in 2016 would be roughly, um, 20, let's call it, uh, if I'm correct, uh, after paying the, our, our yearly payments, it would be a total of about 17 and 1/2 million, and we would end up, uh, if we did project 600,000 for this year, and we look like we're going to get about 6.2, or 6 million for this year, it looks like we're going to get about 6.2, and 6.2 for next year, we would have about a half million to the good side after paying off the jail.
Okay. Are you saying that we have close to 35 million dollars today?
No, sir.
No? Okay, I missed it. You said we have 15.1, and then, and this other account, you're saying you have 18.3?
No. Uh, with the other accounts included, it totals to 18.3.
Oh, okay. So, we, so we have 18 million dollars today, and then, and you're talking about a January to December, 6 million dollars in sales tax? Or you're talking about budget year?
I'm talking about, uh, on the fiscal year.
Fiscal year? Okay. And so, I, I guess what, for me, and I'm sure the other board members would be doing, if we had, I mean, whether we go ahead with the architect or not, I, I think if we continue to, so you had the numbers up there to show, at the end of the time, we're going to have this much money. If we pay the jail off, which is, you know, 17 and 1/2 million, how much money we have left? Because what is the projected balance if we spend no money at the end of the quarter cent today? Do you know?
Project, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I'm not understanding.
If we have 15 million today, um, at the end of the quarter cent, saying, just projecting 6 million a year, what will we have saved up?
Okay.
Without paying it off?
Our, our known balance on 630, 2014, is 18 million, 354,000. Now, till the end of this fiscal year, we'll get another, let's call it another 3 million plus, which is half the 6 million. So, then you would add another 18 million, which is, uh, three years of revenue that we would be obtaining till the sunset on the quarter cent sales tax. And I'm doing this kind of off the top of my head, so.
I, we all understand this is just estimates, and you're also projecting future revenue, which is market-dependent.
18 million for three years to the end of the, uh, uh, quarter cent sales tax, plus another half of the, half a year, that we will be realizing that quarter cent sales tax into 2020, which is another 3 million. So, if you do the math, 6 million times four is, we'll have 24 million plus whatever's remaining. I believe I, I'm correct on that.
Okay. And then, the payoff for the jail is 17 and 1/2? Somewhere around there, say 17 million?
In, uh, June of 2016, the payoff for the jail will be 17,595. 17 million, 595.
I, I guess what I'd like to see is, e- even though we understand it's going to be projections, and if we use 6 million, if that's what we've been having over the other years, I doubt that it's going to go much lower than that. It all, it probably will increase in there. Something to show what we'll have, and then with all the, the payoff, so that we've covered our loans, and then, once you get the jail payoff, now the, um, then the maintenance and stuff comes back to us on the jail, right?
Supervisor Moss, uh, Chairman Moss, Supervisor Johnson, that's my understanding also.
Okay, that'll come back. And then, obviously, with the state coming out and sweeping our funds again, we're going to be in a tough point this year. That would be my only thing. I would just say, before we do this, if we could just continue this till the, the next meeting, we get some numbers in front of us.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody on this issue before we entertain a motion?
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion, um, just to speed things along. I move that we direct, um, the county administration to send out an RFP, to hire an architect, and to be paid for by the general fund, to do the plans for our courthouse, which would adopt a phased approach.
I'll second that, um, with one caveat, please.
Sure.
Administrator Hendricks, to get us the numbers that Supervisor Johnson requested, um, about the entirety of the money, just as we just talked about. The things that you just talked about off the top of your head.
Can I, um, summarize what you're saying, Supervisor Angus?
Yes, please.
Which is, what we just discussed when it comes to current funds, future projected funds, savings, all the rest of that sort of financial issues, if you can put that out to us via an email and a writing, so we can study it further. Is that?
That, that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. We have a, a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's four to one, Jenny? Um, item 26.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Moss, uh, if, with your permission, I'd like to move item 26 to the end of the meeting for executive session.
Um, thank you. I will adopt that suggestion with one caveat. You gave me a caveat. I'll give you a caveat, um, and that is, we have someone who has signed up to speak, um, Jess Jacobs, if he would like to speak now, so he doesn't have to wait till after our executive session, which could be lengthy.
Mr. Chairman, member of the, members of the board, my name's Jess Jacobs of 2457 Miami Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I'm the Chief Business Officer at Mojave Community College. President Kearns was unable to attend today, so we asked that I represent the college in his absence. Uh, first, we wanted to extend our appreciation to the board and the county management team for your efforts in navigating the Mineral Park mine bankruptcy thus far. We also wanted to extend our support for the direction that you've taken, both in slowing down the process, and also with the different disputes and legal challenges that you, uh, have and, and will make, to ensure we make the best of a tough situation, and to ensure Mineral Park is making every honest effort to make good on their obligations to the county. So, thank you for that. Um, also, wanted to briefly just reiterate the importance of this topic to the college. We have three primary revenue sources, uh, with cuts and question marks on state appropriations and fluctuating enrollment impacting tuition. Property taxes stand as our, not only our largest revenue source, but the most historically reliable one, and the, the revenue source we can really plan on and, and move things forward at the college with. For the first time, that's really being jeopardized, uh, here with some of these issues that are coming up. So, uh, with that said, we would ask in your coming meetings and discussions you may have on the topic, to keep in mind precedent. Um, we know there may be other companies who may face financial hardships in the future or are going through them right now, who will, we keeping an eye on how this thing plays out. So, we'd ask to keep, keep in mind that precedent that could come from a decision here, and, um, its impact on the long-term stability of the revenue source for the college. Um, but with that said, thank you again for your support. Uh, we trust the judgment of the board on this, and, uh, thank you for your time this morning.
Is there anyone who has a question for Mr. Jacobs, before we release him back to his other duties?
No, I have another question, though, besides, uh, different from that. Not, not of him.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. All right, we're going to move item 26 to the end.
Mr. Chairman, on that one, the, the question I have is, um, Mineral Park has sent a letter, we all received copies, saying they didn't want to compromise, so I don't see why we need an executive session.
Well, we, we don't want to hear our lawyers say word to us in, words to us in open meetings, so it's bad habit to get into.
But I'm saying, the way it's agendized, is the abatement of compromise taxes, and, and they've said they don't request that, so why would we need it?
And one way or the other, we'll be dealing with that at the end of the regular meeting. Um, so, going on to item 27, discussion on possible action. Ray, approve provision of Mojave County funds, the amount not to exceed $50,000 sourced to fund 216 parks. two one six parks for purposes of stocking trout in the Lower Colorado River during such time. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Willow Beach Fish Hatchery is under repair, coupled with supporting ongoing sport fishing, recreation, and enhancing services at Davis Camp Park. Supervisor Angus.
Chairman Moss, thank you. This morning, I'm requesting this board to approve a one-time expenditure in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to stock trout in the Lower Colorado River beneath Davis Dam. The details of the day, the deal to fix the water delivery system at Willow Beach National Fish Hatchery, which is now between Arizona Game and Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, are still being decided, although it is a concrete deal, but just the details are being decided. But one thing we do know is that the system, the cycle will not be up and running for at least one season. This one-time stocking will supply between twenty and thirty thousand fish, and I believe will keep this industry afloat, as we see so many of our business and industries are, are going under and failing. And I would hate to see this happen to our fishing and tourism industry. I see this as an investment for which we will see tangible returns. As far as how we would do it, Arizona Game and Fish will work with Mojave County. The county would apply for an aquatic stocking permit for Davis Camp round, and we, the county, would stock from a certified vendor.
Excellent. Anything else anyone would like to add on this point? Supervisor Johnson?
The questions I have, first of all, I don't know that it's legal for us to take money from Parks Department for this. I guess we'd have to get a, get a ruling on that. My second question, I, I don't know, Bill, do you want to answer that first for me?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, we've looked at that, and there's a provision in the statutes and the board's powers that I believe can be read to allow you to do that.
Okay, I guess I would feel, if, if the board moves ahead with it, I would feel more comfortable. We've rated the Parks Department, which is self-funded in the, in the past. I believe we have economic development authority where that might be a better place. But that's, that's just my thought on it. The, the second part would be that the, this is not, they've been doing monthly dropping of fish for the, to begin with, and now they've just been doing the wintertime stocking of fish, I believe. I, I don't know that this amount of fish is going to do anything. I mean, it's, it, I understand the theory behind it. Twenty to thirty thousand fish, I'm not, not sure we can get them. I, I called around trying to find out fish, but with transportation and everything else, just finding somebody was, was kind of tough. The location, if we're going to do this, shouldn't they, because they've been dropping on Indian land, also shouldn't we have a buy-in from the cities and the Indians if we're going to be doing this on theirs? I mean, why is Mojave, why are Mojave County residents paying for this service? The biggest benefit goes for the cities and the Indians.
Well, for part of the response to that is that this one-time stocking will be beneath Davis Dam, and that is for the Colorado River in the Bullhead City going down the, the river towards Havasu. That was where we came up. That would be the best benefit for the county. That's the best I can say. I do like your idea about buy-in, and if that is something we want to explore, I wouldn't mind tabling this for, until next meeting. And I do need to get the dates as to when this would happen for you all, to make sure that you, you all understand the timeliness of it.
And Supervisor Angus, I, I called around, and I got ahold of the feds, and, and they gave me a few hatcheries, and, and nobody really wanted to bring trout out here at all. I mean, they said because of larger fish especially, you can't carry as many because they get beat up in the truck, and so you're down to ten to fifteen thousand fish is all you're going to get.
Well, Arizona Ga, well, there would be, that, to that, there would be between five to seven different stockings, because you can't have twenty thousand at one time. There would be separate ones. Arizona Game and Fish do have those contacts, and will work with us to help us with that. You know, Arizona Game and Fish has been a, a great partner with us. You know, as you know, they did step up and put close to four hundred thousand dollars into that hatchery, which they didn't have to do. This was solely should have been a U.S. Fish and Wildlife obligation that they fell on. But they, Arizona Game Fish did, and I thought that as all partners, because this does benefit Mojave County, that this would show that we are part of it. Since we do want to have a say in it, we would have skin in the game, and, and be a partner, and have some say in some, in a way that the fish is stocked in the future.
Is, anything else that you want to add on this point? Because I have a couple of comments. I can. I'll defer to Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to, to point out that Davis Camp is where these fish are going to be stocked at, is my understanding. And they do have a fairly sizable RV park. Most of the people living in the RV park are anglers. A lot of people use the launching facility that are fishermen on the river, and, and Davis Camp also has a fishing dock. So I, I suppose it could be asserted that maintaining the, the trout fishing in Davis Camp is, is a benefit to Davis Camp. So I just wanted to throw that in, since I did spend some time at Davis Camp as a park ranger in the past, and fishing is big.
Supervisor Bishop preempted one or two of my comments, and I thank you for that. I'm glad I'm not the only one who thinks certain ways. My, my take on this is, is that this is a very, very good idea, and primarily because fishermen are, they're a precious commodity. From Mojave County, Arizona, they're a huge part of our economy. Having unstocked areas mean that they will simply go find someplace else to go fishing. And once they establish a new watering hole, I don't think it's going to be very easy to get them back. And I don't want to see Mojave County's economy suffering even further. When it comes to why Mojave County would do this, it's, I view it as preserving a very important part of our industry. I view it as being something which is critical to our Parks Department. That's why Davis Camp is so important, because it is the park which funds all our other parks, is my understanding. And we are the persons best situated to deal with the problem. In my personal estimation, we too frequently fall into it, yeah, there's a problem, and someone else should take care of it. I feel like I'm talking to my children sometimes, where I ask them to take out the garbage, and they start debating amongst themselves who's going to do it, and it winds up that dad winds up taking out the garbage, rather than just dealing with the situation. So I think it's necessary. I think the amount is modest. I think we'll have a resounding benefit of preserving, to a large degree, our fishing industry, and as a Band-Aid approach, if you will, until the permanent solution is put into place. I think it will keep Davis Camp, which funds a very important part of our county departments, as namely all our other parks, healthy and viable when it comes to our fishermen guests. And I will defer to Supervisor Angus, but I'd be inclined to act on this now, and dealing with the issue now with the details to follow, but it's your call either way.
Okay, I'd just, I'd just like to respond to Supervisor Johnson's claim that he didn't really know if twenty, thirty thousand fish would really make any difference. Back in, I believe, August, Arizona Game and Fish stocked twenty-one thousand fish at the same location down at Davis Camp. And the local biz, business people who deal with fishing claim to have doubled their receipts from the year before. So it does make a definite impact. It is a lot of fish. And at that point, we were the best stocked place on the whole West Coast. And if we promote it correctly, and if we work with our local businesses and promote it, I do think it will make a significant difference. So I would like to go ahead, if, if that's okay with the board.
I guess, if I may, just respond to that. I understand they had the, the receipts that came back in, but that's a fast-moving river that we have there, and the fish are put in. I, I don't know if we have anybody here from Parks Department, but we don't have that large, because we basically give away the data to everybody to come in for free. The fish are gone, so while it might help, I think if we're going to move ahead, we should have a plan, plus we should ask the cities to participate.
My take on it is, the fast-moving nature of the river is actually a plus, because it means it winds up helping Lake Havasu's fishing industry. So we've doubled our benefit. I, I, and, and the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe, and the Colorado River Indian Tribe, yeah, we can say that we should ask them to participate. Now, we should ask them to participate. But when we ask them to participate, it should be in addition to what we are currently doing, and it should not be conditioned upon them, our participation, because we're looking to protect a very, a critical component of Mojave County's economy. And the residents of Bull, Bullhead City, the residents of Lake Havasu, the residents of many of the Indian res, the people who work on the reservations but live off the reservations, and I think there's several hundred of them, to my knowledge, all are also Mojave County residents and taxpayers. So I, I really don't see a good reason to not do anything. With that said, unless anyone else has anything to add, I'd entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve expending the fifty thousand dollars for the trout.
And that, would that be in conformity with item twenty-seven?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's another four one Jenny? Thank you. Going on to item twenty-eight, discussion of possible action. Ray, approve and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number two thousand fifteen dash zero one six, establishing a zero point two mile section of Patterson Road from Tennessee Avenue to the Chloride Cemetery, as defined in AZA zero three six four four one, a county highway for the purpose of developing a public access road to the Chloride Cemetery grounds, and further direct the Public Works Department to perform improvements, establishing an unsurfaced roadway satisfying requirements for acceptance into the Mojave County road maintenance system. I will turn this over to Supervisor Bishop, as this is her item. I do have, I'm going to speed brakes, I have had a late delivery request to speak form, but because we like public participation, I will accept it. Item twenty-eight, Stephen Robinson. Sir, if you can state your name and address for the record.
I am Steve Robinson, thirty-four thirty-nine North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. I support in principle establishing this as a county highway. What I'm concerned about is the legal procedure according to twenty-eight, ARS twenty-eight sixty-seven oh three, which, whether it's presented by petition or by recommendation of the county engineer, there is supposed to be a public hearing. Now, this is pretty close to a public hearing, because if something can be discussed, but technically it's not a public hearing, and therefore I think it's not following the law. And that, you know, I've studied the whole thing, the whole law about public hearings for roads, and there's been a, sometimes it's occurred that roads have been approved as county highways on the consent agenda. But state law requires a public hearing, which means it has to be properly noticed to the public. That's my only concern, from strictly following what the rule of laws establishes. Thank you.
If Attorney Extrem or County Administrator Hendrix can comment on that?
Chairman Moss, and I appreciate Steve Robinson's comments on that. We, we deal with the county highway statutes, and he's correct, it's twenty-eight sixty-seven oh one. There's several parts to that. There's actually three ways that a county highway can be established. The county highway can be established, A sixty-seven oh five, I'm sorry, eleven, I'm sorry, twenty-eight sixty-seven oh one A is by the Board of Supervisors unilaterally. Or the county highways can be established through recommendation by the county engineer, or through a petition process, which goes through a public hearing.
Is there any other comments on this point?
I have questions on.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
I guess it'd be of Mr. Lutowski. Is, is the cemetery a private business, sir?
Chairman Moss, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, the Chloride Cemetery is currently owned, the property owned by the Chloride Cemetery Association.
Okay, and so when they applied for their, whenever the cemetery was put into effect, they had right-ofways and roadways, and required them to do certain things? Did they not follow through with what they were supposed to do for a business?
Chairman Moss, Supervisor Johnson, the Patterson Road had been laid out and opened to public travel, both from the north, from Tennessee Road, which is an extension of Chloride Road from U.S. Ninety-three, as well as from the south, where Patterson Road connects to a old Boulder Highway. However, it was subsequently found that those right-ofways were not formally established. And as such, in late 2013, a private property owner north of the Patterson, of the Chloride Cemetery exercised his right in taking claim to his private property, and not allowing the public vehicular traffic to access the cemetery. So those right-ofways had not been established.
So that was the original right-ofway? And this is a different right-ofway you want to, you want to establish now?
Correct. Supervisor Johnson, the staff at the direction of the Board of Supervisors had worked direct with BLM to formally establish a right-ofway assignment, which was subsequently accepted by the board in November of 2014. So there is a right-ofway now fully established from Tennessee Road south to the cemetery.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that how important it is for us when we're getting this information on businesses and other things, and accepting all those roads for tertiary and everything else, that we have the right-ofways. I mean, here's another thing that comes back, where now the county has to get involved in a private business and, and go through all of it. That, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
I would, thank you, Mr. Lutowski, also. I do have a comment also in that. I'm not going to get into the legalities of it, that Mr. Robinson and, and County Administrator Hendrix brought out. That's not my role. I do believe that this is an important right-ofway, mostly because I'm not going to, I want to make sure that loved ones have the ability to visit their family members who are, are in the cemetery. So I'm, I'm going to vote for this. I would like to say for future reference, when we bring these roads issues to us, I would like to see the public hearing process followed, just as a matter of good policy. I don't like doing things by executive fiat if there's no good reason for it. But I don't, that's not going to delay my decision on this at all. So just future suggestions. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead. Supervisor Bishop?
The Chloride Cemetery, I believe, is a, a nonprofit organization, and the road leading into the cemetery that we, was used for years and years, did end up being private property, and no one knew, knew that it was private property until this gentleman assessed his private property rights and closed the road off. There is a back way into the cemetery, which is about two miles longer and very difficult for outsiders to find. But that road also goes through several different private properties that could assert their rights at any time and close off that back road into the cemetery. And the road, when it's, when we have rain, it turns into clay-like material that's hard to navigate. So I have visions of the, the family and the hearse getting stuck on that road, and that's just something I don't want to think about. So I wanted to publicly thank BLM for working with the Chloride Cemetery and the county to establish a new roadway, which is not so different from the existing roadways, that visitors from out of town should not have difficulty finding the road and getting to the cemetery and their loved ones. So, so the cemetery also serves Mojave County indigents. So I think it's important to Mojave County that, that we recognize that service that the Cemetery Association does. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number twenty-eight, and establish this county highway.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Going on to item twenty-nine, discussion of possible action. Mojave County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number two zero one five dash zero one four, recognizing January twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen, as a national day of remembrance for American downwinders, and strongly urging an amendment to the radiation exposure screening, an education program that provides for the addition of Mojave County as a covered area. I believe this is under Supervisor Bishop's name, so I will go ahead and turn it over to her.
Thank you. As, as a Mojave County downwinder and a cancer survivor, I am very proud of this resolution. I'd like to read it.
Absolutely, this is a very important issue Supervisor Bishop.
Okay, this is Resolution Number two thousand fifteen dash zero one four, Resolution Recognizing January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, as a national day of remembrance for American downwinders, and strongly urging an amendment to the radiation exposure screening and education program, RICA, that provides for the addition of Mojave County as a covered area. Whereas the Board of Supervisors met in regular session this twentieth day of January, two thousand fifteen, and whereas Mojave County hereby recognizes January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, as national day of remembrance for American downwinders. And whereas on January twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-one, the first years of nuclear weapons tests were conducted at a site known as the Nevada Proving Grounds, located approximately sixty-five miles northwest of Las Vegas, Nevada. And whereas the Atomic Energy Commission assured people living near test sites that testing would not occur without adequate assurance of public safety. And whereas many Mojave County residents worked and lived downwind from And whereas many Mojave County residents worked and lived downwind from nuclear testing sites and were adversely affected by the radiation exposure generated by the above-ground nuclear weapons testing that occurred in Nevada. And whereas with the implementation and subsequent amendments to RICA, many parts of Mojave County were overlooked in determination of covered areas where counties further east and southeast were deemed eligible. And whereas findings of Arizona Radiation Regulatory Agency concluded that the rad's per individual to the thyroid in Mojave County were in some cases three times higher than those found in other Arizona counties that are covered areas. And now, therefore, yet resolved that the county of Mojave County does hereby urge our congressional delegation to develop legislation that would amend the radiation exposure screening and education program to provide for the addition of all of Mojave County as a covered area.
Chairman Moss, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-014.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good. I apologize for that. Item 30, discussion of possible action. Ray, approve a general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $10,428 to the North Canyon Constable Budget 100-01-0902. Folks, I have to apologize. I spent three days coaching two soccer teams in six games each, so 12 games, and they did very well. I'm placing... My boys placed third out of 30. My girls placed four out of 20. They did excellent, but I yelled an awful lot. So I apologize. Okay. Can I have a motion on item 30?
Motion to approve item 30?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 31, discussion of possible action. Ray, approve a general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $50,000 to the General Administration Budget Legal Services 100-01-0500431.10.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Picking up on item 26, Mr. Ekstrom, do you require an executive session on this issue?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Let's go back to the room, and we'll pick up on item 26. Folks, I can't tell you whether we'll be back in a few minutes or a few hours. I think it won't be that long, but just so you're aware.
Do we need a motion for executive session? Bill, do we need a motion for executive session?
Yes.
Yep.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.